What's your all record, Stefan? What's your all record?
Eight and one.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I'm rolling this.
I have right now seems like that. Pretty safe one.
Honoring on his own property.
You can say whatever you want to say.
Thank you, Claire.
Yeah.
I believe.
I understand. I'm here for it. Hi, Alan.
I believe we are streaming momentarily.
All right. I'll wait on you. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. And welcome to Caddo Parish Commission's regular meeting. At this time, I would like to call our meeting to order and start with the roll call by our clerk.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Crackman.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Young appears to be absent at the moment. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner John Paul Young.
Here.
Commissioner Burrell.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Gage Watts.
Present.
Commissioner Blake is absent. Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Catherine.
Here.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson. Okay, we have ten of twelve commissioners present. That does constitute a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We've already had our invocation and pledge of allegiance at our prior meeting. And so we will forego those two items. I would just like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones at this time. Next item, please.
That brings us to agenda additions, where you do have one item to potentially consider today. It's an agenda addition for a special resolution celebrating the 250th anniversary of the Marines.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Stefan Jones and second by Parliamentarian Victor Thomas. Commissioner Jones.
I yield to the author.
Commissioner Thomas.
I'll do the same.
All right. At this time, I would like to open for a public hearing on a potential agenda addition for a special resolution celebrating the 250th anniversary of the Marines. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against adding this to our agenda? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. Please vote.
Okay, and that motion carries with eleven in support and none in opposition. And that item will find itself as the final item under Section eight now. And if there, and there are no other potential agenda additions today, so we can move forward to citizens' comments, where citizens who wish to address the commission on any issue other than zoning or asked to fill out a comment card located in the chamber before you're in turn to me to my left here. Comments are limited to three minutes. At this time, we have not received any requests for public comments today. We do have a number of members of the public here today, but they are here for other items. So if it is okay with you, we can move forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, we don't have any scheduled visitors today, but we do have some items under Section seven to adopt regular session minutes. In addition to the regular session minutes from your October 23 meeting, you also have minutes from your special session meeting to introduce the budget.
Okay. I have Commissioner Stefan Jones for the motion and a second by Commissioner John Paul Young. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on your motion?
Thank you, Madam President. If it pleases the body, I'd like to englobo and adopt Sections eight, excuse me, seven and eight, along with the presentations for the special resolutions.
Okay. All right. Commissioner John Paul Young is amenable and has second. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on it?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Young.
No, ma'am.
Right. Seeing no others? Please vote.
And that motion carries with eleven in support, none in opposition. And at this time, it would be appropriate if there are any presentations taking place of special resolutions, if we want to invite those individuals up.
All right, if you, Mr. Shamariyan McCoy of the Booker T. Washington Band, if you would, please come down to the front. And everyone else, please stand for the reading and presentation.
And this is a special resolution of Mr. Shamariyan McCoy. And it is taking one minute to load, but if, thank you for your patience. And this is a special resolution of recognition honoring Shamariyan McCoy. Whereas the Caddo Parish Commission desires to recognize and honor outstanding young citizens whose accomplishments bring pride to their schools, their families, and the parish of Caddo. And whereas Mr. Shamariyan McCoy, a sixteen-year-old junior at Booker T. Washington High School, has achieved the highest musical honor available to high school band students in the state of Louisiana, being selected to the 2025 Louisiana Music Educators Association All-State Symphonic Band. And whereas Mr. McCoy is the first student in Booker T. Washington High School's history to be selected for the LMEA All-State Band, marking a historic milestone for the school and a significant achievement for the community. And whereas in addition to his exceptional accomplishment, Mr. McCoy is also the only student from Caddo Parish to be selected for this elite ensemble in 2025, further underscoring his extraordinary talent, dedication, and commitment to musical excellence. And whereas Mr. McCoy's selection to the All-State Symphonic Band is preceded by a series of impressive recognitions, including his placement in the 2024-2025 LMEA District Eight Symphonic Band as a tenth-grade student, his distinction as First Chair Tremblown in the 2023-2024 LMEA District Eight Concert Band Second Band, and his earlier achievement as a member of the Caddo Honor Band in the ninth grade. And whereas these accomplishments reflect not only Mr. McCoy's personal discipline and passion for the arts, but also the strong support of his family, teachers, and band directors at Booker T. Washington High School, whose encouragement and mentorship have helped foster his exceptional growth as a musician. And whereas the Caddo Parish Commission wishes to commend Mr. McCoy for his dedication, perseverance, and excellence, and to celebrate his historic achievements that bring honor to both his school and the entire parish. Now therefore be it resolved that the Caddo Parish Commission does hereby honor, congratulate, and extend its deepest appreciation to Mr. Shamariyan McCoy for his groundbreaking accomplishments in music and for representing Caddo Parish with excellence and distinction. And be it further resolved that this resolution be recorded in the official documents of Caddo Parish Commission and that a copy be presented to Mr. McCoy as a symbol of the commission's pride and recognition.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Not y'all. Not y'all.
You're the man of the hour. I hate you, just everyone else. And I know you have some guests here with you, so we would like for you to introduce them as well. And you are welcome to have some comments.
Okay. Well, as y'all know so far, my name is Shamariyan McCoy. And this is my mom, this is my dad, and this is my baby brother CJ. And this is my principal, Principal Barnes, and this is my band director, Mr. Hudson. And to start this off with my comments, I would have to simply just thank God for everything that he's just done.
Man.
And just, I thank him for the talent that he's given me, but not just for my talent, but what my talent can, has done for people in general. And with my talent, I thank the people that has helped grow my talent, as the support of my family and friends, the support of my band director. And if you see him at the back, yes, lower brass instructor, Mr. Conrad.
Mr. Conrad.
And it's just, I would say with me just starting on the horn, I never thought it would get this far, just because it was just, I started the horn just because of a silly idea of just wanting to be better than my dad, because with the silly idea of just wanting to be better than my dad, because he played trombone, and he had made his kind of type of legacy at Grandland State University.
All right.
But it's just with, just with my age so far, is I've already pretty much surpassed that.
Wait, you don't tell. That's all right. Yes.
But I will, my dad is one of the people I have to thank, because he is one of the main reasons I am where I am. And, and believe it or not, my, my parents probably don't even believe this. My, there was one time, probably before I even got into, before middle school, I think, I just quit the horn and I quit playing the trombone in general. And it's just like, I just quit the horn, but it's just, I don't know what made me get back on it, but it's just. Yes.
It's right, Mom.
Yeah, but, but just through that, the love, the love for me playing the horn, it grew over time. Because it's like, once you start something, it's not instant, just like feeling out of nowhere. You gotta build that feeling and emotion with almost anything you do. But I would say this is the end of my comments, and just thank you, everybody.
If I could just add one thing to his comments, I just want to say that I do work for the R. Cattle Bojers Goldman School. And with the partnership that we have with you guys, this is a result of when a parent realizes things about their child and they get the early intervention.
Yes.
Because he was nonverbal to the three.
Wow.
We got him into early steps. He got head start early, and he flourished. You know, he also would have his college degree through Southern University here before he even has his high school diploma. So just early intervention. Yes, early intervention and just, you know, prayers of, you know, from our pastor and my godfather that are back there, you know, just having that village really helped him thrive. So I just wanted to add things to the.
Yes, thank you so much for sharing that portion of your testimony. I'm not going to see, the principal, I've known her a very long time, over twenty years. And I watched your band director grow up in the church at Morning Star. And so this is like one big family in full circle. And just knowing that you're going to thrive and continue to do well in what you're doing, because the very first thing you said, you keep in God first. And I know that he will direct your paths. We are super proud of you. I know that the parliamentarian, when he gets done crying, he has a whole lot to say here. And this is his district, and I want to give him the opportunity to have some words for you, okay?
Yes, I'm trying to get myself together. They tease me because I'm the one quick to cry, but I love to see children doing amazing things like this. Mr. McCoy, when your band director informed me of your accomplishment, it was an honor for me to make sure that everyone in Caddo Parish knew how you were representing them. You mentioned something I want to tell you, and I want you to remember this as always. Your gift will make room for you.
Amen.
It will take you to places that you never thought were even possible because of your gift. Ms. McCoy, thank you. Thank y'all for investing in him, in his talent. As you can see how it's paying off, congratulations on getting your degree from Southern University at Shreveport. That's, that's a feat, that's another thing that takes me out when I see those young people walk across that stage getting their, their college degree before they even receive their high school diploma. It truly is a testament to the, the people that are poured into you. Thank you, Mr. Hudson, for what you do. Thank you, Principal Barnes, for what it is that you guys do. Once again, we're so proud of you, man. I'm, I'm gonna stop. Thank you.
Vice President, I'm sorry, we got a few more on the board. Stay with us, Mr. Horn. Vice President Ken Epperson.
Ms. McCoy, you did quite an accomplished presentation to us, and we really appreciate it. All I can say is continue the way that you are going now. And I will see you Sunday, November sixteenth, at the Sparrow Lounge. Be looking for you all in the parade. Thank you.
Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations to you. I can tell you as a father that your dad is more than proud that you have surpassed all that he has accomplished. As parents, that is our dream, that our children will surpass the things that we have accomplished and be much greater than we are. And so that's okay to brag on that. And I'm sure he's gonna brag on the same thing. It is just a blessing to have you standing here. I, I love music myself. Music soothes the beast. When Saul's soul was troubled, it was David who played his heart to soothe it. And so what you have been gifted is certainly a gift from God to be able to play that instrument. It's not something everyone can pick up and do. Maestro will tell you, it is a skill that you can learn, but to perfect it, there has to be a passion to take it to the next level. And I can tell that you have that, that passion. You've got a lot of great people around you, and God has certainly blessed you with a great support system. And so don't forget that. Always keep them in mind and always give God glory for what he has given you. And he'll continue to add to it. Don't ever forget the kingdom. If you take care of the kingdom, the kingdom will take care of you.
Amen.
And it's already doing that. So as you continue to grow and hopefully march in world fame as well, I went ahead and put that out there. He's already shaking his head. We have a hard time getting brass players down, down next to eighty-one. But, but certainly, my prayers are with you. And I'm so proud, I don't know if everyone paid attention, but this young man is the only representative from Caddo Parish to accomplish this. So you have put the entire Caddo Parish on your back, and you're gonna make us proud. So congratulations and look forward to hearing more about you in the future to come.
Amen. Commissioner Roy Burrell.
What you accomplished, but music is always there. And the second thing is your speech. If you don't do music, you can be a speaker. And I was very surprised when, when your mother was saying about you being nonverbal until three. I guess you just waited until after that to really express yourself, because you express yourself very well. Dr. Hudson, my good Alpha brother, I know that you're gonna be doing great things, expecting great things. And the principal, you have a great school over there. And there's a lot to live up to. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Ron Catherine.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. McCoy, I just want to congratulate you. As I sit here as a former principal and listen to how you articulate, it makes me very proud. Because, you know, one of the things I continue to hear people talk about in this city, in this parish, that we're losing our young people, no we're not. Not long as we have parents like the ones that you have and the administrators that are standing by your side as well. And the one thing, I went to something this morning, and I heard a gentleman say, the one thing, the reason why we are losing this battle, because we don't have this culmination right here. And I promise you, if we continue to do this plus this, we will have more Mr. Maccoys standing in front of us. So once again, I thank you for what you're doing. I thank your parents for what you're doing. I thank your administrators for what you're doing as well. And the thing is, any way that we, me, can be of assistance to you all, please let us know. Thank you again very much.
Commissioner Gregor Young.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all for coming up today. I really do appreciate what you're doing. You inspire us. I really want to take this time to celebrate the statement that you're making for our parish in particular. You all represent what we're trying to do on this Caddo Parish Commission through the efforts that we have initiated for our parish film and entertainment advisory board. We have embedded within this body an effort to bring attention to so many of the talented young people like yourself. And I want you to continue to be an inspiration for your peers, because let me tell you something. I do believe that there are young people within our community that don't necessarily have the support system that you've enjoyed. And you can continue to serve as a catalyst to make other young people, and as well as your family, can inspire other families to really get on board with their children. And the way you put it, you know, you saw that young man, even when he was experiencing those difficulties in his youth. You saw the potential in him. And so what we want to do as a body is to enjoy the kind of efforts that your school and your family represents. We want to get on board. We want to do our part as community leaders to ensure that other young people like yourself are inspired. We want Shreveport to become an epicenter, Caddo to become the epicenter of film and entertainment for the whole country. And I want you to know that behind the scenes, and I'm sure that Madam Administrator and some of the members on our advisory board are really, really working hard behind the scenes to make sure that individuals like yourself are gonna get their attention worldwide about what you're doing. So thank you very, very much for being part of this effort. God bless you, Madam President.
Congratulations again.
Y'all not gonna let CJ talk?
CJ, do you have anything you would like to say?
Yeah.
Thank you, because he had the warmest greetings. Allow him to say something. Hi, CJ. Thank you for coming. Okay. Are there any other presentations at this time, Mr. Clerk?
Not that I'm aware of, though we do have printed out copies of others if there is anybody else who is.
I don't see anyone.
Okay. That, in that case, we can move forward if you're ready to do so. Our next section is Communicating Committee Reports.
Thank you.
And our first item is the Administrative Response.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Just want to let you know that the flyer for the food distribution, we'll have that ready. We're still finalizing some locations, so we'll try to hopefully have that to you tomorrow. We're planning, there, right now, we have ten locations, and we'll do half at nine AM and half at ten thirty AM. That's the tentative, but we hope to have that to you tomorrow.
Madam Administrator, could you speak up?
Oh, sorry. I was just talking about the food distribution that you all, you approved the food distribution early into the year for November twenty-second. I told you Monday we'd have the flyers today. I was just telling you, we probably have them hopefully tomorrow. We're still trying to finalize a couple of locations. Right now, we have ten locations, and we're planning for five at nine AM and five at ten thirty. It's just the delivery of the food boxes, we have to split the times in order to make sure they're all delivered in a timely fashion. That's all I have for today. I'll take any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. C. Oh, Commissioners, any questions for administration? Commissioner Gregor Young.
Madam Administrator, is, is Patrick Wesley, is he in today?
His assistant, Ms. Williams, is here today. Katina is here. Katina Williams is assistant director. She's right here.
Well, I'm not sure if she's privy to, you know, what I'd like to her to briefly discuss. I think it would be helpful and useful if, in light of the presentation that was made by the family, if we can say, have them to say something about where we are in regard to the efforts that we plan to roll out next year with our film and entertainment for the year.
You know, we did put an item in the 2026 budget.
Okay.
Once you all vote on December second, if you vote in affirmative, then we'll be able to give you the detailed plans once we have the funding secured.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
It was good to have you come up, for us to see you real pay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, seeing the other Commissioners.
So are you ready for, to move on to the president's report?
I think so.
Okay.
I was just making sure.
Didn't want to cut anyone off.
Checking, checking the board. Yeah, if you're on for communicates, you can get on for communicates and committee reports. Commissioner Stefan Jones, and I think Commissioner Ron Catherine is also.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to remind everyone about this Saturday at Abbey Palmer Park. From nine AM to one PM, there's gonna be a park cleanup. This is sponsored by City Grove United. It's at Abbey Palmer Park and Recreation Center, 547 East Seventy-Ninth Street. For more information, please call three one eight, three four nine, nine six two eight. This is sponsored by City Grove United, Mr. Tanya Small and Dorian Ford, and Joanna Lisa. Thank you.
Good job. Thanks. Commissioner Ron Catherine.
Thank you, Madam President. The family that we just had present a few minutes ago is very indicative of the mayor's Shreveport and Bojers prayer breakfast that I attended this morning. And the guest speaker, who was Judge Matlock, made a comment, and I just wanted to share with everyone. And basically what he said is the epidemic that has destroyed our city. And he went into different things, different scenarios and things of this nature. But he said, the bottom line is the family. And we just saw that a few minutes ago. When we have a true family that sticks together with the support of our young people that we have in this parish, they can achieve things that they never thought that they could and things that beyond our expectations as well. He went on further to say that he would like to see different entities establish committees just to focus on this epidemic with the family. And as he said, there's no one answer to fix this thing, but collectively, we can. And I think with your permission going forward, I address it a little bit more. I think we need to establish such a committee to look at the family, if possible, and go from there. But again, we could talk about it a little bit later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Stefan Jones, second time around.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Madam President, just in response to Commissioner Catherine's concern, I think that would be something that juvenile justice could possibly look at discussing in the future. So I look forward to putting a committee meeting together so we can talk more.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Ron Catherine, I'm sorry, Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, as you know, Madam President, we had a Audit and Finance Committee meeting today. We reviewed the results of the internal audits around HR and some retirement benefits and some information technology system work. I just wanted to let you all know that that's all, all proceeded fine. There were some small, moderate to low-risk issues that were identified, but all, that approaches have all been assigned to remedy those issues. So I think that, that the process is working and, and we'll continue to try to make the parish better through the internal audit system. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Ron Catherine.
Thank you, Madam President. I forgot to mention that we did have a long-range planning committee meeting. And the director of the Job Center asked that we defer until approximately January, February 2026. At that particular time, we would get back together. Once he has the enrollment that he needs in order to come back to us so we can support and possibly plan out some projects that we might be able to assist some citizens within the parish as well going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, seeing the other Commissioners on the board.
And that brings us to the president's report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I just wanted to go over some of the items that were presented by Congressman Cleo Fields, and I think everyone received this packet from our governmental liaison. Thank you for this hard copy that I requested to discuss some of the SNAP benefits in the court-ordered action where the federal judges has ordered the Trump administration to use the contingency funds, partially providing fifty percent November benefits, which were due by yesterday, and no delays were permitted. With this package, it helps us to understand better where the deficits are with the recipients of the SNAP benefits, because this is only allowing them to receive half of what they normally would receive. And to my understanding, this will be at a twenty-five percent per week that they will be receiving. So it's not only advantageous, it's mandatory that we do something to supplement during this time. Thank you for the support that we received in passing the legislation, advancing it forward, as we had actually already allocated some funding back in August to address this issue that would be coming down the pipeline. But I just want to. But I just want to remind everyone that we will still have more work to do here. Commissioner Burrell.
Mr. Pointer. The document that you have, you said that that was just shared with you, or is that something that we can use to talk to the public?
It was shared with all of the Commissioners on your email. We received it on yesterday. I just requested a hard copy.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, that will conclude my President's Report.
Okay, thank you so much. That brings us to the next item. We have no public hearings for zoning ordinances, but we do have several public hearings for regular ordinances today. Would you like me to read them? And we can open one public hearing for the three items today?
Yes, if you would read them collectively, and then I'll open up for public hearings.
Sounds great. The first is a public hearing for Ordinance 6564 of 2025. That's an ordinance adopting the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Shreve Memorial Library for the year 2026. The next item is a public hearing for Ordinance 6566. That's an ordinance to close and abandon two portions of road right-of-way in the Forbing Factory subdivision in Section 8 Township 16 North, Ridge 13 West, in the Parish of Caddo, and otherwise provide with respect thereto. That is in District 9. And the next item is a public hearing for Ordinance Number 6567 of 2025. That's an ordinance amending the 2025 budget to amend the budget of estimated revenue and expenditure for the housing choice voucher program and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
All right. At this time, I would like to open for a public hearing on Ordinance Number 6564, 6566, and 6567. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against these ordinances? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing. I'm sorry. All right. I was too quick. Welcome.
Hey, Jonathan Ratliff, Rayleigh and Associates, 4913 Shed Road, Bossier City. Third time up here, so it's just a little cleanup. That's what this ordinance is.
Okay, which ordinance?
This is 6566.
And you're speaking in favor or against?
Yeah, in favor. So, and just to keep y'all informed in case anything was confusing, some of this is cleanup, some of this is existing right-of-way. There's an old 28-foot right-of-way along an edge that we want to close that we can make all of the properties touch each other and not have a 28-foot unusable alley right-of-way down the center. And then some of it was stuff that has been bought over but still existed within the property. So, it's just a lot of cleanup so that we can get the commercial subdivision going.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Atkins? Okay. All right. Now, I declare this public hearing closed. Okay.
Thank you very much. So, since we had no public hearings on zoning ordinances, we also have no zoning ordinances for final passage. But we do have the ordinances, the standard ordinances for final passage that we just had the public hearings for. So, I'll begin with the first one, which is to consider adopting Ordinance 6564 of 2025, an ordinance adopting the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Shreve Memorial Library for the year 2026.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Stefan Jones and a second by Commissioner Ron Carthron. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on your motion?
Thank you, Madam President. If it pleases the body, I'd like to englobo and adopt Ordinance 6564, 6566, 6567.
All right. That's been moved by Commissioner Stefan Jones to englobo and adopt Ordinance 6564, 6566, and 6567. And second by Vice President Emerson. Commissioner Jones, do you want to speak on that?
No, ma'am.
Vice President Emerson. Okay. Commissioner Ron Carthron?
Yes, ma'am. It's not really speaking on it. I guess, I wanted to talk to the Administrator. I requested we have whoever the Director of the Shreve Memorial Library at some point schedule a appointment, because I would like to talk to him or her concerning some concerns that I'm hearing about a particular branch under this system.
We have representatives of the library here.
Great.
So, they heard your request.
Okay, so I'll talk to them as soon as we get through with the meeting. Thank you very much.
You didn't want to ask any questions at this time? You want, okay, all right. Commissioner John Atkins.
Well, thank you, Madam President. With respect to the library, I will compliment the... I will compliment the structure of the budget report this year. It seems like it was much more clear that a lot of the funds are going towards capital work, one-time capital work. That wasn't always so clear in the past, so thank you all for making that clarification. And then with respect to Ordinance Number 6566 regarding the closing and abandonment of the two portions of the road right-of-ways in District 9, I just wanted to let my colleagues know that we're good with that. Everybody I've talked to is good with that, so we'd appreciate your support. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Seeing no one else on the board for any other discussion, please vote.
And that motion carries with 11 in support, none in opposition, and one absent. The next item on the agenda is going to be ordinances for introduction by title. We have a number of ordinances today, so I'll begin introducing Ordinance Number 6596 of 2025. That's an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $10 million of limited tax revenue bonds of Caddo Parish, Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. The next item is to introduce Ordinance Number 6597 of 2025, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget of estimated revenues and expenditures, and oil and gas funds. And that item has been amended based on your Monday recommendations. The next item is to introduce Ordinance Number 6598 of 2025, an ordinance amending the, amending Ordinance 6554 of 2025 pertaining to a schedule of licenses and fees and otherwise providing with respect thereto. The introduction of Ordinance 6599 of 2025, an ordinance amending Article 2 of Chapter 36 of the Code of Ordinances relative to alcohol and drunkenness in parish parks and otherwise providing with respect thereto. And then the introduction of Ordinance 6600 of 2025, an ordinance amending and reenacting Chapter 52 of the Code of Ordinances relative to utilities, including solar farm regulations, and otherwise providing with respect thereto. And the final ordinance for introduction today is Ordinance 6601 of 2025, which is an ordinance declaring certain adjudicated properties to be surplus and authorize the parish administrator or a designate to sell the Parish of Caddo's tax interest in certain surplus adjudicated properties and otherwise provide with respect thereto in District 3. That brings us now to Work Session Minutes, where you do have the minutes attached from your November 3rd work session.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Stefan Jones, and it's been seconded by Vice President Ken Emerson. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to englobo, adopt Section 17 and 18.
Okay. All right. It's been moved to englobo and adopt Section 17 and 18 by Commissioner Stefan Jones and seconded by Commissioner John Paul Young. Commissioner Jones, would you like to speak on that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Young? All right. Commissioner Emerson? Seeing no one else, please vote.
And that motion carries with 11 in support, none in opposition, and one absent, and brings us now to Section 20, where we have the first item of new business to be considered is the reappointment of William Bradford to the Industrial Development Board.
Right. I have a motion by Commissioner John Paul Young and a second by Commissioner John Atkins. Commissioner Young, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to englobo and adopt the reappointments and appointments in Section 20.
All right.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt the appointments and reappointments in Section 20 by Commissioner John Paul Young and seconded by Commissioner John Atkins. Commissioner Young, do you want to speak on that?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Atkins?
These nominees have all been vetted, and many of them have served for a number of years in the past, so I think I'm very comfortable with them.
Thank you. Seeing no one else? Okay, please vote.
And that motion carries with 11 in support, none in opposition, and brings us to the end of our New Business Section. That brings us to Communicates and Reports. And the first item that we have under this section today is a special presentation of a special resolution that was adopted in your last regular session meeting for Mr. Max Chambers.
All right. And they are here. Mr. Max Chambers and family, if you would, please come down front to the podium. And if everyone else, please stand.
Would you like me to go ahead and read it into the record? I'll begin. This is a special resolution in recognition of Max Chambers, and it reads, "Whereas the Caddo Parish Commission desires to recognize and commend outstanding citizens of Caddo Parish who through their talent, determination, and excellence bring positive recognition to our community. And whereas Mr. Max Chambers, a proud resident of Caddo Parish, has recently represented our community and the state of Louisiana on the nationally acclaimed NBC television series, The Voice, where he showcased his remarkable vocal ability and stage presence to audiences across the country. And whereas The Voice is one of America's most popular and competitive singing shows, drawing thousands of auditioners from around the nation each season, and Mr. Chambers distinguished himself through his soulful performances, musical skill, and authentic artistry. And whereas Mr. Chambers' success on The Voice reflects his dedication to his craft, his years of hard work, and the steadfast support of his family, friends, and community. And whereas beyond his musical accomplishments, Max Chambers serves as a positive example for young artists across Northwest Louisiana, demonstrating that perseverance, creativity, and faith can lead to extraordinary opportunities on both local and national stages. Whereas the Caddo Parish Commission wishes to recognize the pride and inspiration Max Chambers has brought to our parish and commend him for his outstanding achievement as a performer and ambassador of our local culture and talent. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Caddo Parish Commission does hereby extend its sincere congratulations and recognition to Mr. Max Chambers for his success and exemplary representation of Caddo Parish on The Voice, and expresses its gratitude for the light he continues to shine on the artistic spirit of our community. Be it further resolved that an official copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Chambers as a token of the Commission's admiration, respect, and continued support for his promising musical career, and that is signed by all members of the Caddo Parish Commission."
You may be seated. Congratulations, Mr. Max Chambers.
Thank you.
And welcome. The floor is yours if you would like to have any comments about receiving this recognition on today.
I would just like to say thank you for recognizing my, for acknowledging my accomplishments, and I'm proud to represent the city of Shreveport.
Awesome. That's it? Would you like to introduce who you have with you?
This is my dad, this is my mom, and my sister, and my grandpa.
Awesome. We have some Commissioners who are on the board who would like to have a word with you. We're so ecstatic about all of the accomplishments that you've made. I know that there's this big show called The Voice.
Yes, ma'am.
That has made you pretty popular, huh?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, we're ecstatic in anticipating the results of that as well. But you've done so much more, and that's just a snippet of it. We've been trying to get you here to honor you for a while, but we know you've been on the road all in Broadway performing. So, we're just so proud to have you in Shreveport and Caddo Parish. You're an actual asset to us. And we want you to know that we're here for you and that we support you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Commissioner Parliamentary and Victor Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. "Don't you worry about a thing." Y'all, that is the song that Matt sang recently on The Voice, and he got a, hey, I too am talented in this space. At least I'm not crying.
On the film and advisory.
Right. I just want to tell you, congratulations. You did an amazing rendition of that song, everything that I've seen you do. I remember your performance at Art Break has talent. And like Commissioner Greg Young was saying, that's what we want to do, is nurture that homegrown talent so that they can go and represent us abroad. I'm rooting for you. I saw that they've even declared you as a frontrunner for the competition. So, we can't wait to bring you back when you've won the competition. We're going to declare that now, that you are the winner of The Voice. And once again, congratulations, young man. I can't wait to see where your gift is going to take you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Ron Carthron?
Thank you, Madam President. As I sit here, I am beaming. What you all don't know, this is my cousin. Okay? His father and I grew up in Cedar Grove together, and Max's grandmother can blow his way, okay? Now, I asked him quietly, I said, "Now, can your grandfather sing?" He said, "No." But again, it's indeed a pleasure to look at a young person like you and the gift that God has bestowed upon you. You come from a, from great stock, okay? And God had planned this long before you were born. And I just ask that you continue to give Him the praise and the glory. And I thank you parents, ancestor, and grandpa, and grandmama that's not here right now. Thank you all for what you're doing, because again, if we could take this village and duplicate it throughout this parish, we wouldn't have enough room to celebrate our young people. So, once again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, that's so good. God has afforded us two opportunities. You're the second young man that we've been able to honor on today with their families standing beside them. Commissioner Gregory Young.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I'd just like to echo the sentiments that have been expressed to you all. We thank you so much for coming, and I really do appreciate you all really, really helping us to get this message across that this area is entirely, entirely prepared to take that mantle as the epicenter for film and entertainment within these United States. We have such a rich tradition in this community. And I want you to know that your presence here today, in addition to receiving this recognition, you're giving back. You're giving back to other families, and you're giving back to other young people. So, they're going to have a chance to have their talents put on blast. And thank you so much. You just cannot know how much you have enriched and how much yourself and the other young man that came up earlier before you have really communicated to this body that we're on the right track. Thank you so much. And we look forward with us next year as we begin to roll out some incredible activities to help yourself, yourself, your family, and other young people like yourself and their families get the recognition that the world yearns for. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stefan Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start off by saying you're very well dressed. My grandfather would say, "That boy, there is sharp." Echoing the same sentiments of everyone, this is a blessing. This has, to me, been probably one of the best meetings we've had this year. Just being able to see you all come in today and stand with your families and be recognized. Caddo is in good hands. And so, our hope and our future is bright. You're very well talented. Dad can sing and play as well, and so, he gets it honest. And I'm just grateful for the fact that you are so confident. Your stage presence is great. I mean, to be your age and not be afraid of the crowd, not be afraid of the moment, you own the stage. And so, I'm looking forward, I agree with Commissioner Thomas, we're going to proclaim that you are the winner of The Voice. And not just The Voice, I believe God is getting ready to open doors for you that you can't even fathom. And your gift is going to do that. So, thank you so much for what you've already done and looking forward to what's to come. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roy Burrell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations, Max.
Thank you.
I happened to be in my kitchen at the time, and I heard this voice. I said, "Oh." And then when they said Shreveport, I could have screamed. I ran back in there to see who it was, and you were standing there. I don't know your parents directly, but I know this fellow right here, your grandpa. You know, and I know if you're cut from that cloth, you're pretty good. I'm just thinking about this young lady who's sitting there. Normally, the fruit don't fall too far from the tree. And are you one of those singers too? Are you developing your talent? I bet you are. But congratulations. We're looking for great things out of you.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Commissioner John Atkins.
Thank you, Madam President. And not to be too repetitive, but I did want to congratulate you on behalf of our whole community. Thank you for representing us so well on The Voice. And I also wanted to share Commissioner Jones's compliment of your attire. You look so professional and well-turned-out. Someone has really taught you to pay attention to detail. And you know, my dad used to say, "A young man can never be overdressed." And apparently, your dad or your granddad tells you the same thing. So, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Atkins made a comment today when I came in about me being dressed up. I knew I had to be dressed up, because I knew you would be dressed up. I've never seen you not dressed up. But again, we're just so... But again, we're just so happy and just ecstatic about everything that you're doing and we want to continue to encourage you on your path. We're here for you, we can be of any support, please don't hesitate to let us know and congratulations again.
Thank you so much.
That's The Voice.
All right.
And I don't usually add commentary, but, but as a father of a son about his age, I would say, "I'm also very grateful that you seem to be making manners cool for the whole country." The way you speak to the profession, to the grownups and professionals on the show, you can tell they are impressed and it is very impressive, so we're proud of you, good job.
That was good, Mr. Clerk.
Sorry to have veered a bit, but that brings us now to, to, we're still in Communicates and Committee Reports.
One else is on the board?
And that brings us then to Citizens Comments, Late Rivals. We have no comment cards at this point in time?
All right, be in the jar.